Thank you. Any public hearings? Okay, thank you. Reviewing the agenda and perpetual calendar. In the month of January, just so people are aware, we will be, we have an invitation to meet with the Finance Committee. That invitation date is Tuesday, February 7th at 6:45. I am available. If anyone else is, that'd be great. Caitlin, I think you did respond you were available. Jennifer? Okay, I will schedule the meeting. It doesn't require a quorum of school committee members, but if Caitlin and Jennifer can be there, I will plan on scheduling that meeting and everyone will be invited. Is that okay? And then we can let them know to make sure it's posted properly and all that.
I may be able to come as well, Dan.
Great, whoever can come is great. It's hard to get everyone, you know, in sync, but as long as we have the the main players, that's awesome. And I will confirm that meeting date. In addition to that, we have the Our Town Newsletter to go out again. It's generally the responsibility of the Chair to write that. However, if anyone would like to write it because they love writing newsletter articles, they're more than welcome. If you are, please email me. This month is also the Four Towns Meeting that is scheduled for February 11th at nine o'clock. If you haven't received an invitation, we can make sure that you get one. Years ago, we used to have all boards meetings this month. We haven't had very many all board meetings anymore since the pandemic, but maybe they'll come back around someday. And lastly is the budget, which we'll be getting to later this evening. Okay? Any questions on that? All right, let's move on. Warrants. Trevor, I believe you receive a lot of the warrants. They've been forwarded to you, signed by Steve, I believe.
I get a summary from Caitlin and then sometimes Steve will send me some, so I don't, I mean, I never see signatures. I just, I just have the amounts.
Okay, Steve is not here this evening, or at least I don't think so. My technology is limited. Okay? Trevor, would you be willing to just give us the invoice numbers and the amounts?
Sure, I can read them out. This is what I got from Caitlin. So for accounts payable, invoice 3011, November 29th, 2022, in the amount of $36,946.41. Invoice 3012 from December 13th, 2022, in the amount of $10,553.09. Invoice 3013 from December 27th, 2002, in the amount of $25,727.86. Invoice 3014 from January 10th, 2023, in the amount of $5,093.8. Invoice 3015 from January 24th, 2023, in the amount of $33,042.34. That's all the accounts payable I have. For payroll, invoice 311 from November 28th, 2022, in the amount of $86,864.16. Invoice 312 from December 12th, 2022, in the amount of $84,548.43. Invoice 313 from December 26th, 2022, in the amount of $86,207.68. Invoice 314 from January 9th, 2023, in the amount of $85,122.88. Invoice 315 from January 23rd, 2023, in the amount of $83,619.34. And that's it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the warrants as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Seconded.
Excellent. And all of those in favor? Hey, is I?
Martell, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Excellent. Gifts? Jennifer, do you want to talk about the gifts or?
No gifts, but we do have a grant that needs an acceptance vote. It's the REAP grant, which we get every year from the federal government in the amount of $15,221. And this grant we put towards salary.
And REAP stands for?
Rural Education something, something, something Rural Education Agricultural Program or something like that.
Do we have a motion to accept the REAP grant?
So moved.
And seconded?
Second.
All right. All of those in favor? Is I?
Taylor, I.
Rose, I.
Martell, I.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from November 17th, 2022?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any edits? Okay, all in favor? Is I?
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Martell, I.
Okay. And just so you know, I'm not asking for anyone who has is objecting or abstentions because obviously we are all approving, so. I just didn't want you to think I was skirting that. Later, Nate will be coming and presenting some energy information on the Energy and Climate Action Committee. Nate Heard, I put him here because we thought he'd be in here at this point. He's not, so when he comes on the screen at some point when it's convenient, we'll bring him back. Okay?
He is currently coaching my kid in hockey, but.
Okay. Perfect. And I see that Debbie Lee is with us, so if everyone is in agreement, what I'd like to do is come to the unfinished business, which is the next item on the agenda, and we'll go specifically to the school safety features and specifically the telephone system. Is that okay with the committee? Okay. So as we know, there are issues with the telephone system that are problematic and perhaps a safety issue. And so Debbie Lee is here this evening to give us some information. We did receive that in advance. Trevor, I don't know if you received that. Just as a keeper of records.
I probably did. I didn't look through all the.
It's okay. Yeah. If you didn't, at some point, we can always get that to you, but just so that's part of the minutes. All right. So Debbie, would you like to present us your findings?
Sure. I trust that everyone has a copy, so if I just make some assumptions, that's based on the thought that everyone has it. So as, as you said, the Safety Committee really brought to the table the urgency of getting a working phone system in place as soon as we could. So the first step that we took was we took a poll of tech schools, well, actually, tech coordinators are part of a something called a professional learning committee. And so we put out a poll to see, you know, what local area schools are using and if they're happy, just as a way of kind of just throwing out a net to collect information. And then from that information, I, we started to run through demos. And as you can see from The Matrix, we first started with identifying what our system requirements are. We know how many phones we have. We know how many phone lines we have. The big thing that we really needed to pay attention to was the E911 federal and state regulations. And that was actually really important. Right now, our current system is not compliant. So all new systems are required to be compliant. And so that was another piece of our requirement findings. We also looked at making sure that, of course, we have backup redundancy. We also were cognizant of the fact that we have currently our phone bill on a monthly basis is roughly $95, give or take per month. So we really knew that we needed to keep the monthly recurring costs as low as possible because obviously that's something that's every month. So after sitting in on several demos and evaluating the different options based on one-time costs, monthly recurring costs, and also really getting the feedback from other schools who have experienced with these systems was another important piece. And as you can see, the one that came to the top for us is Crocker Communication Solution. I believe the Town Hall actually has that solution too in place. Not the phones that, you know, we're looking to purchase, but the system itself, I believe, is at the Town Hall. And, and also Crocker Communications was our ISP for the town of Shute's Berry until we switched over to Shield. So I'm, I'm pretty pleased. I feel that it's a really solid solution from what we've gathered so far. So I just didn't know if anyone had any specific questions for me.
So Debbie, first of all, I'd like to thank you for a really thorough job. You gave us a lot of information, really answering a lot of the questions that I probably would have had. I also appreciate hearing from you what your recommendation is for us to approve. And I would say, you know, even looking at the numbers that financially, it looks like it's the best value. Obviously, you're familiar with the system and, or, or Crocker themselves. So, nice job. I did want to ask, and maybe Jennifer would know, I know I forwarded you some information on, I think it was called the Safer Schools and Communities Grant. I don't know how that all works, but perhaps there's money there that could be used in some capacity, maybe not necessarily for the phone system, but I guess being sure that we're in compliant, as you mentioned, Debbie, with the E11 or whatever that was called. You know, maybe there's opportunities for us to look at. I know we've talked about cameras and things like that, so I did forward that to you, Jennifer, as well as to Todd Cost at the Collaborative, so that could be shared with other superintendents, but.
Yes, I had received a couple of grants. One was a farm-to-school grant, the other was the safety grant, and we talked about that at Leadership. So all of the principals were going to take a look at those grants, as well as Caitlin and I, to see if we could, if it would be possible to use it for security, whether it's cameras or video cameras or phones or whatever schools are needing. So thank you for also sharing that.
Does anyone have any questions for Debbie regarding the systems or recommendation? I say, I would have a question just in terms of Caitlin, maybe this is for you, is how are we looking at funding it?
So I was just about to bring that up. So Jackie kept us in a loop on this very early in the year. So the budget that you saw in November and the one that we have now already has the extra cost for, for the monthly bill going up. So the budget amount for this year was 3,000. We raised that to 6,500 in anticipation of a new system that would be more monthly.
And the one-time cost? Is that built in anywhere?
So those usually go into lines for extraordinary maintenance or sometimes grants that we can, we can find and we can use.
Okay, so we should have the money.
Yes.
Okay. Perhaps it would be good for us as a school committee to vote to endorse the recommendation of using Crocker Communications phone system to replace our outdated and non-compliant phone system in the amount of a one-time cost of somewhere around $5,000 and a monthly fee of $376.40. And Trevor, if you've got all that, someone could say so moved.
Could you give me that monthly again?
Yep, $376.40.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, you guys are gonna have to fight on that one who gets it. Give it to Bethany. No offense, Julie, you can get the next one.
I'm not a power move for tonight.
Are there any other questions? For Debbie? Again, Debbie, looking at what you provided us, I think it's phenomenal. I appreciate the hard work that went into this. It really makes it easy for us. And again, I think this is one of the reasons why our school is so successful. I think of it all the time. It's because we have processes in place, really good people who are involved in the decision-making. And these decisions are coming from people with all of that knowledge and expertise. So thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. It was really kind of you. Thanks.
I appreciate it. All right. Thank you. You can, you can hang out if you want. Later, we're talking policies, but.
Oh, that's okay. I'm prepping for my lesson tomorrow.
Thank you again.
All right, take care. Thank you. Bye.
Good night, Debbie.
Bye.
All right. Well, why don't we continue on and, well, capital projects, building process, we keep that on the agenda as a constant conversation. Steve is not here. Obviously, we had an email today about the leaking roof. Jennifer, anything to report on that?
Um, I didn't get any further updates from Jackie regarding the roof, but we did get notification from the town that, that they did not vote to accept the MSBA program for the boiler. And so I just wanted to share that and we, we sent a letter and an email to the MSBA and then we got a response back, so we will not be using MSBA funds for the boiler.
Right. And do we have any idea why at this point?
I think what I gathered from reading the letter from the town was that the program scope of boiler replacement did not meet the needs. The grant for the boiler was limited to components within the boiler room. The town shared that they had just completed an HVAC upgrade. And the components are through the building and didn't qualify for grant funding. Numerous other elements of the HVAC system were upgraded and that left fewer upgrades to be included in the boiler grant often offering. As a side note, they did wonder why we were investing money into fossil fuel-based equipment. So the long and the short of it is the town's review of the MSBA cost data showed that the boiler project was beyond their financial means and not the direction that they were going with respect to reducing reliance on fossil fuels.
Good. Kitchen floor. Do we know anything on that at this point?
I have no updates on the kitchen floor. And I don't know what the last one was on the agenda. And I don't think Jackie left any notes regarding, oh, and the other one was the telephone.
Right. And the other question I have on the glycol tanks.
Those have been, those have been removed.
Thank you. All right. Anything else on capital projects? I believe we have an ongoing list, so that is something that the Capital Planning Committee also has. Suzie, since you're just joining us, I do say that the committee is able to meet with the Finance Committee on the date that you suggested, Tuesday, February 7th at 6:45.
Great.
Okay, do I need to follow up with an email or you're good?
No, we're good. And did you, and later in this meeting, you're going to approve the budget? That'll be the one that we're talking about?
Yeah, we're going to come to that later in the meeting. So you're, you're before that. Perfect. I know Jackie is not here. Do we want to hold off on any further discussion of school choice funds at this time? Okay. Any further information on security cameras or is that with Jackie as well?
Yep, and that, that was part of the discussion at Leadership around the, the grant. So we're going to look in depth at that grant around the security cameras.
Possible. All right. Does anyone have any questions on any of the unfinished business? All right, great. Well, we're gonna move on to new business as long as nobody sees Nate here yet. Good. Again, thank you. I, I'm limited with how many people I can see, so I don't want to overlook him.
No Nate yet.
No Nate, yeah, thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the FY24 budget. And Caitlin, do you want to share on the screen?
Yes, give me just a second. I'm so used to my director's report before I do the budget. We need to find it. All right. I'm gonna share my screen. Can you see it? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I'm gonna make it a little bigger. Okay?
Even better.
So this is the, the budget summary, which I'll come back to at the end. This is almost entirely the same budget that you saw in November, but with one small change. So for the administration costs, those remain the same as last month. The most of these are the Union 28 expense lines, which we have our Joint Supervisory Committee meeting on Monday, January 30th, to have a vote on those. So these are still preliminary because they are, they're, they're put in anticipation of it getting passed, but we have not had the vote yet. Going down to the instruction lines, the only change from the last budget is in line 39, therapeutic services. We have hired a Union 28 physical therapist that's going to deliver services to all four schools. For Shute's Berry, it's a .12 FTE. They have the lowest need in the, in the union as far as services. So there's a slight increase there. Where we would typically take that, that out of would be in line 40, special ed contracted services. We're leveling that off, but the, the reason why we decided to hire the physical therapist was because of a steep increase in the hourly amounts for the contracted services for PT. So instead of needing to raise that line, we've increased the therapeutic services line, so they, the budget has increased a little bit because of that, but it would have had to increase through the contracted services line instead.
Correct. And the service we use is through CAPS Collaborative. And they did go up on their rates, so even though we had budgeted 79, almost 80,000 this year, I think the total for Union 28 was going to be around $130,000 as opposed to the salary for the physical therapist. So it's another way we can share services. And the fact that it's a Union 28 higher is that then we can fluctuate where the physical therapist will go. So it is a cost savings in the long run. We won't have to worry about the cost increase from CAPS Collaborative. And when we have the contract, we will know exactly what the physical therapist for Union 28 will be making. So it's a cost we can count on and predict through contracts.
That was the only change from November until now, so, but I can kind of review. And if you have any questions, please speak up for any of the lines. I love going into a budget where the contract is already set for the teacher, so there's no guesswork. This is, this has been great. Because all of the lines for any of the salary positions like line, you know, 35 teacher salaries, line 36 teachers, specialists, regular ed salaries, those are based on the personnel that we have now. We know what they're going to be expected to make next year and we can predict pretty accurately what the, what that's going to cost for those, those accounts. So the gross instruction has gone up a little bit from the last budget, but it's still 3.5%. All of the other ones, other, other sections have stayed the same. The other school services, plan operations, maintenance, including line 77, school telephone, we'll see that increase to anticipated new telephone service. We did increase, and I'll kind of recap from the last meeting, line 76 for fuel, we're just anticipating higher fuel amounts as well as school power. So that's where a lot of that, that increase has come from. The fixed charges. And.
I think the good news, though, Caitlin, right, our fuel bill was a little less this month?
Yes, we went from an $18,000 fuel bill a couple of months ago to $13,000. I'm rounding those off. I'm yeah, I don't have the exact numbers, but it was a decrease, which was like, oh, $13,000 fuel bill. This is amazing. I never thought I'd hear myself say that. And our revenue sources, and I'm gonna zip back up to the budget summary.
Yep.
So that puts us at a gross total spending of a 5.14% increase. But our revenue sources have gone up a little bit, and so our net total, what we're asking for from the town is a 4.83% increase. Budgeted mostly because of the, the fuel and the power for the school. So these are, are costs that are unavoidable. We're not increasing services. We're not increasing personnel. It's, it is the, we're putting our money into the anticipated amounts that fuel and power are going to cost.
Okay.
On that note, let me just say that Nate is here and Nate, we know that you're here and we just moved on to this and we'll move on to you next.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Julie. All right, so maybe we can go back to everyone's faces. Perfect. You know, given the fact that the Union 28 portion of this is pending and we will be meeting with the Finance Committee, should we hold off on voting on this budget? Jennifer, were you expecting a vote tonight?
I, I'm fine if we hold off on it. That's perfectly fine with me. And we can vote either at the next meeting or we can vote if we want to have a one-item agenda meeting immediately after the Finance Committee meeting or right before it. So I'm fine if we hold off if the committee so wishes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the budget? Oh, I'm sorry, Suzie, I didn't see your hand.
Um, so when you say power, you're talking electricity?
Yes.
So I do know that the LED lights will be in and the roof will be fixed, so I wonder if those numbers will be coming down. And I wonder if we would build that into the budget or not, but those are two things that affect fuel and power.
Well, if I can interject, my recommendation at this point would not be to change those numbers. There Well, if I can interject, my recommendation at this point would not be to change those numbers. There are still so many variables and we, you know, we'd love to see a reduction there, but I think things are so volatile that it wouldn't be prudent to do that. Of course, I think everyone here knows that if those items are in the budget and we don't spend what we need, usually we are giving that money back to the town on a regular basis. So it would not be it it wouldn't be used to buy things that we didn't need. Okay, anything up there, Susie?
Nope, I think I think the FinCom submitted some questions. We will have a meeting. We won't have a meeting before that. So the other thing is anytime something sheets get generated that have to do with finance, it'd be good if I was in the header and got them. So I don't have that cover sheet. And then I understand there's not a lot of changes in the in the main sheets, but if 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 you do print something, it's good if I get it so that I can prepare people and inform them.
What what cover sheet?
The cover sheet that broke it out by administration, bleh, blah, blue, the first sheet.
Oh, the the budget summary sheet? Yeah, that was new to this budget and I'll
Anything that's budget related, it'd be great if I got it. Thanks.
And just so the other members of the committee know, some of the questions that we were asked to give were a summary of the number of students enrolled, I think for the last ten years, and some information on school choice numbers. Okay, so we're all in the loop. I'm not sure if you were all included in those emails. Sometimes I I don't know if everybody is. But we're basically just answering questions. Okay, any questions from anyone on any of that? All right, so we'll be planning on a vote in the future. We have our meeting scheduled with the finance committee meeting, finance committee. So we are going to circle back around to the presentation. And welcome, Nate. We appreciate you coming here this evening. And I think it's a great segue because we are looking at the budget and the high cost of power and heat. And maybe you'll have some ideas and solutions here. But take it away.
Yeah, thank you so much for for inviting me to join you this evening. I did prepare a couple of slides, really just maybe five.
So we need to have you as shared as a host, right?
And that should be coming up on your screen right now. Super. How's that?
Perfect.
All right, well, thanks again for inviting me to talk about the Energy Climate Action Committee. I am one of seven members of this committee. And it's a relatively new committee. We're still shy of one year old. At least in our current form. So we are building off of the work of the former energy committee. But one way that this iteration of that committee is different is that we have this specific charge to respond to the increasing challenges of the climate crisis. So part of the framing of our work when we were stood up is a set of prioritized actions from the municipal vulnerability plan and the hazard mitigation plan. So I don't know if you've heard of those reports. Some of you may have been involved in providing input to that process of developing those plans. So in order for a town to apply for certain climate mitigation grants from FEMA, it's necessary to develop a a report of this nature. So there were a series of meetings that where people were allowed to provide input. And then through a consultant, this hazard mitigation plan was developed. And a couple of the actions that derive from this process mention the school and I'll highlight those a little bit later. But there are a lot of potential areas of work for our committee. Since we're only seven people, it's definitely more than we can tackle by ourselves. So part of our charge is also to liaise with other committees and boards in the spirit of collaboration. So I have a fifth grader in SES. And so I happily volunteer to reach out to the school committee. So that's that's part of what brings me here if you see me. All right, so climate is, of course, a very dynamic area of work. And one of the reasons that I joined the Energy and Climate Action Committee, or I'll just call it ECAC from now on, is that it's it's just a phenomenal learning opportunity. So it was a ton to learn. And just the work of the committee has been really fabulous in in that regard. So we're working to stay up to date on climate change science. And we're also trying to learn what other small towns are doing to reduce fossil fuel consumption to mitigate the effects of climate change. And we're using that to inform proposals to the select board that might be a good thing for Chutesbury. One program that we're exploring is called Community Choice Aggregation. And that is a program that would allow Chutesbury to increase the proportion of renewable electricity that we use. So currently, when you turn on the lights, you're likely getting the default supply that National Grid or Eversource provides. And that that had that default has a lot of natural gas-powered electricity as well as as oil in it. So we're looking for ways to kind of push our electricity supply to hopefully offshore wind in the future, but other like non-fossil fuel sources. And we're also tracking grant opportunities as well. And we are maintaining a set of resources on our committee webpage on shootsberry.org. So working to put people in touch with mass save opportunities. You were just talking about LED lights at the school, which is really exciting. So there are incentives, certainly with the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act that we we want to see how other small towns are leveraging those funds and identify opportunities for ourselves to take advantage of them. So and then finally, one of the first things we did as a committee was we sent out a household energy use survey. And part of the purpose of that was to kind of build a baseline of data that we could use to help inform our understanding of how the town is currently using energy from different sources and then to get a sense of what the town is thinking with regard to energy and climate issues. All right. So back to the hazard mitigation action plan. So SES has came up in two places in ECAC's work so far. So it appears in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, one of the prioritized actions that came out of that process was to install central air conditioning at the school. And I think the first motivation was to support children as average temperature increases, okay, while school is in session. And then there's also a mention of a proposal to use the pool, use the school as a cooling center during extreme weather events. So that might be a proposal or an idea that you've already discussed as a committee and tabled. But I did want to flag it here, just because it's part of that overlap of ECAC's charge and then you know, sort of the the school committee's domain of decision-making. And similarly, I had forwarded information about this earlier. But one of the listservs that we monitor, I had promoted this Renew America School Grant Opportunity. And the first round of funding, that first tranche is like closing right now. But it might be possible to apply to this grant or a similar grant for efficiency improvements or even potentially something as large as a renewable heating source. So something like a ground-sourced heat pump that would sort of move the school off of heating oil like altogether. So I actually was able to log on just as you started talking about that line item in the budget. And you know, absolutely, everybody is you know, dealing with the volatility there. And yeah, part of that has to do, of course, I'm sure you all know, but just the being subject to sort of geopolitical forces that are, you know, outside of our control, even if we do maximize our opportunities to weather strip windows and, you know, seal those cracks in our homes and buildings. So if we see other opportunities in this sort of grant-making opportunity space, then we'll absolutely forward those along too. So that's like really all I I had, but I'm eager to like be part of the conversation with the school committee and help in any way I can with all things related to energy and climate action. And then, you know, if you're working on energy and climate-related issues, problems or solutions that you've identified, I would love to be a conduit from your committee back to the Energy and Climate Action Committee too, because you know, we want to, we want to learn and you know, also be sort of a repository for other communities in Franklin County because some of the there are some innovations that sort of they take place at a regional level, for example. Just to elaborate on that. So yeah, thanks again for for having me. But yeah, I was really glad to be able to join you.
Thank you, Nate. So I think I I have a quick question for you. I know you mentioned the school is possibly a shelter cooling center or something like that.
Nate, could you stop sharing so that we can just see each other?
So I I can only speak for myself. As a school committee member, I think for me, I feel like the school is a central part of our town, our culture, our buildings. And I would be happy to do whatever we I can to support the town and the community. But I wonder if, for example, like there is an emergency response team in town, like if they came to the school and said, we want to use the school as a cooling center. That's where I think it might come from. For example, I know right now they're using or they were using in the last few days, the town hall as a warming center. So I imagine that there is a committee that's working on emergency response. So my suggestion would be if you're working with those committees and they want to use the school in some capacity, we'd be more than happy to hear from them.
And Jen has her hand up as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken.
Hey, thank you. So my husband is on the fire department and they generally do open the fire department as a cooling center. And some seniors do come and use it. Not a lot of families go. And obviously, if there was a real serious like power outage and it was a hundred and five degree day or something, we might need the school as a backup for families to be able to come as well because the fire department's pretty tiny. But also, just in general, as an emergency shelter, the school should always be available, I think, to be used in that capacity. It's our largest and most convenient town building. So I think definitely being in contact with the fire department, they would be really happy to work with you on that. And I think is Walter still acting as a ma- emergency town management? I I know he's, oh, okay. So is it Lenny now, Suzie? Sorry.
It's Kristen Burgess, Chief Chris.
Okay, it's okay. So the police chief is another really good contact as well there. Just wanted to put it out there. And I know the fire department would be happy to work with you as well.
So I think, but that needs to be orchestrated through an emergency management plan. If we are a part of that plan, I think we're willing to listen and participate in whatever way we can. Personally, I'm wondering about the heat pump that you've talked about. So the way we sort of operate at the school, the roof is leaking. We ask the Buildings Committee. The Buildings Committee sort of works to figure out what needs to be done, but working with specialists, hiring engineers. So again, and I'm not trying to push you off, but I'm just wondering if those are the people that you should be talking to for that I would say as well. I mean, if we, for example, on our capital planning committee, say, you know, the siding is looking bad, we go to the Buildings Committee. Now, if there's some energy efficient new siding or a stain that can be put on that's going to be weather resistant or whatever, like I wouldn't know any of that. But I think that's where the Buildings Committee is responsible for those kinds of things. So I'm not trying to push you off, but I'm just wondering how this all works. Now, for me personally, looking at the expense of oil and and all of that is how does a heat pump work, you know? So that might be an interesting thing. And I don't expect any answer on that, of course, right now. But I would love to know more information on a renewable energy source that's going to be also reliable.
Dan has her hand up as well.
You know, ahead, thank you, Suzie.
And the emergency management team includes Jackie Mandanza. So there is a there is a mechanism for coordinating and communicating all these all these different priorities. Jackie has a has a full-time job. And and how much she gets to time to participate in the emergency management team meetings, I don't know. I don't know how often they're meeting right now anyways, but the 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 sys- the system is set up to keep all the different departments in the loop and she's the representative to it.
Julie? Hope you're muted.
Sorry, there are so many children running through here. I would be happy to sit in as a school committee representative on any of those committees, just to have more flow of communication as well. So.
Right. So again, I think with the emergency management team, I would imagine that they're looking at the town as a whole. And in the event of an emergency, they have come up with some sort of a plan. If the plan includes the school, then yeah, we just need to know about it and and how that's going to work. So I don't know how that works. You you know, but I definitely think that the school is a resource, should be utilized. And certainly, if there's any kind of an emergency. But we just need the plan. How does the plan work? Who unlocks the doors? Who can be let in? Are are children? Do they need to be out of the school if we're bringing in everyone from town on a cooling, on a hot, to warm them, for example. So, you know, is there a plan A, like this is what happens on on a winter day or plan B? If it's kids are in school, then we have to go to plan B or, you know, again, I don't know how that all works. But just so you know, Nate, and I can hear it from from Julie and from But just so you know, Nate, and I can hear it from from Julie and from the faces uh from Bethany and Jen, we are all in and will do whatever, you know, needs to be done. It's a, it's a resource. We just need to know where we fit in.
That's excellent. Yeah, I really appreciate that um for sure. And I think, you know, with there are some um you know, experienced folks um in town government on the committee. But it is a relatively new committee finding its uh footing. So uh it's just good to have this this network and um yeah, to be in touch with you and um sort of introduce myself. Um yeah, I couldn't let the opportunity go without promoting the wonders of heat pump technology. So we're just briefly, we're um at our own home um uh installing a ground sourced heat pump. And what it, what it's able to do is leverage the constant temperature that that exists once you get below, you know, I mean, twenty feet down in the ground, it's always like fifty something degrees, right? So in the wintertime, you can kind of pull that base temperature up um from the ground, even when it's, you know, negative two out. And um it just pulls that uh that heat out of the ground, it puts the cold back. And in this, in the summertime, it just does the reverse. It pulls the cool air out and it puts the heat uh into the ground. And those can function uh as a scalable technology. So it can work for a single family home uh or for a larger uh building. You know, say a municipal building, for example. So um it's something that's out there and um yeah, whenever that that oil furnace needs replacing, um that would be the golden opportunity. But uh you know, I don't know how long the Inflation Reduction Act uh dollar incentives will be around either. So um we'll, we'll stay on top of that. And then also, I think this is a great tip to be in touch with the Buildings Committee. But you know, certainly keeping you in the loop too. So yeah, yeah, I appreciate the conversation.
If I could add one more suggestion, I'm sorry, Jen, you go first.
Sorry, Dan, you could totally, go ahead.
So Nate, uh here is a suggestion. We have been looking at boilers for the school. I believe that some people thought that it was nearing the end of its life. I I don't know if that is in fact true. So my suggestion is, again, going to capital planning and finding out like, well, and working with Buildings Committee. When is, when are we gonna be reaching the end of the life of those boilers? So it might be better to be proactive, to be doing the research, to find out what we need to do. So that if there is uh MSBA funds available in the future, instead of asking them for boilers, which they're not fond of because of obviously fossil fuels, we may uh be on top of the list uh because we're suggesting a heat pump. So that is where I would start.
That would be a huge win. Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
Things, I don't want to extend the meeting out too long. But um I just wanted to say, first of all, uh just a little insider background on the swi- the ways that the school committee or the school and uh the Hazard Mitigation Committee might cross over. It, the smoke alarms were going off on hot days in the school over the last couple of summers. So the fire department continually got called out and Jackie had to keep coming out and letting people in. And it was an, it was a thing. So that's something to explore in terms of AC as well. And maybe just take a peek at the sprinkler system in the school too, if that's a hazard mitigation issue. And just make sure it's all, I think they've been flushing it and it's all good, but it's a good thing to peek at. And uh yeah, if you ever want to touch base, I'm happy to explore more or give any more information that I can. I don't want to take up too much time, but just different things to think about with hazard, hazard mitigation in the school. Oh, in- internal infrastructure was the other thing I was gonna bring up, just um there's like, there's internal doors that can close i- in the case of a fire or a major emergency. Uh not everybody has those schematics um for how that all operates. And I'm not sure, I'm sure Becky has a plan in place for how that would all go down, but it might be good to look at that as well in terms of hazardous application.
And Julie.
And one last thing, just as far as resources, I just wanted to say that you might actually already know, but we actually have two living buildings in Amherst, right next to each other on Hampshire campus. There's the the Kern Center and then there's also um the Salamander Place. What is that?
Hitchcock.
Yes, Hitchcock. And and they might, I can't remember, I I did so much work on this, but I cannot remember if they're using geothermal in Kern, but they might be. And it might be on a bigger scale than just, so uh I know that they have a person who's sort of working full-time on just being able to sort of report out to the world how those living buildings work. And I think it might be Sarah Draper at Hampshire College, but you can check that out and that would be a good resource too.
So Nate, we appreciate you coming here, presenting us with uh this exciting climate committee. And um as you can see, what happens when you uh make suggestions, you go home with some homework. So uh thank you for for attending and um we appreciate uh your your insight into this. And I especially really look forward to hearing about more about this heat pump.
Thanks so much. I'll uh I'll forward my slides along to you, so you have.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right.
Thanks, Nate.
Moving along, reports, superintendent's report.
Yes, um so as we all know, it's uh budget time of year. So we're really crafting um budgets in all four of our districts. Um we're all at different places in different uh districts. And as we mentioned before, we're meeting Monday to finalize our Union Twenty Eight budget. Each new year, many of us take the time to reflect on the previous year and plan for the new year. And in Union Twenty Eight, we do that as well. And we have sent out surveys to staff relative to both student support services or special education and professional development. We strongly believe that uh continuous improvement for our district is based in part on a feedback loop. And as a leadership team, we'll be analyzing and discussing the feedback we receive as we continue to plan for the future. So we met um as a leadership team to discuss results of the professional development staff survey and taking that information and helping us for this year as well as next year. Um I also have met um a few times with the Director of Student Support Services to look at some survey results as part of our roadmap for continuous improvement for student support services. Um Karina and I decided to um survey families, to survey staff and to survey um leaders about student support and what we're doing well, what we can improve on, et cetera. And um we will be continuing to meet on, on looking at the survey results together and um and taking that information and planning. Um Karina and I are also planning coffee and conversations with families to gather feedback in a different way. And so we will set up some meeting times where families can come and share um notices, wonderings, questions, concerns about student support. And we will aggregate that data as well. We've been meeting every two to three weeks around looking at possibilities and options for creating what we're calling the supportive classroom. Um but it really is some sort of separate programming that we could do within twenty, Union Twenty Eight for all of our Union Twenty Eight schools, maybe house it at one of the schools. And we could tuition students in, but it would be cheaper than out of district placements. And so we're really mapping that out. Um and hopefully, within the next year or two, it's the long process to think about all of the angles, we could do something like that in Union Twenty Eight. We did talk about our physical therapist. We're really excited to have that person come on board. And we are having some time where CAPS collaborative physical therapist can overlap with ours. And I think it's, it's going to be wonderful to have our own person on staff. We sent out our January Central Office Newsletter to staff. We're getting the February newsletter ready. I did my homework today for Lindsay and turned in my blurb for the February newsletter. And I recently sent out the Quarterly Family Newsletter. It's called Updates from Union Twenty Eight Superintendent. And it's going out three to four times a year and giving families um an overview. And we also post it on the Union Twenty Eight website. And lastly, all of our office personnel, all of our building secretaries and Pamela are working on the School Attending Children Report for DESI. And this report includes the enrollment of all full-time students whose parents or legal guardians are residents of our cities and towns, for us, our five towns. This information is as of January first of the school year. And we do the reporting for students K through twelve. So that includes local public schools, regional schools, vocational schools, collaboratives, charters, out of district, public schools, home schools, private schools, et cetera. So lots of data that they are collecting. Um and then that gets turned in prior to February vacation to DESI. So they have an accurate account of where our children are attending school. And that's my report for this evening. If anyone has any questions or comments, I can take them.
I would just say fabulous. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, uh next is Director of Finance and Operations, Caitlin.
Okay, so since Schu- Schutzeberry was the first budget that I presented, that I completed, presented, your meeting just landed first. Um I've been working mostly on the budgets for the other three schools. And so yours hasn't changed much, and so it's been kind of an easier budgeting process so far. Um so that's all I have to say about the budget. I've been really busy with budgets, but not necessarily for Schutzeberry. So it's been, it's been great.
Would you say that Schutzeberry is now your favorite because of that?
I'm not gonna say it's not my favorite.
Jen, did you have a question?
I do just have a quick question about Budget Sense and where we're at with all of that. I know you're gonna report on it on Monday, so I don't need a full report, but just wanting to prepare for Monday. And know um if we've got other quotes going, I'm sure you do, and just what that's looking like.
So from what I've found, everyone uses Tyler Technologies. And with the other, um I found one other product for us, but it wouldn't fit our needs. And it was around forty thousand dollars compared to, it wa- it was a lot more. So um there is no other product out there that fits the needs for our school. And I'm really excited about being able to update Budget Sense, have a a newer system that can also track things like um like employee benefit time. Right now, my HR payroll person, Jessalyn, is doing everything paper-based and Excel spreadsheets, and it takes up a ton of her time. And so updating the software, we're allowed, will allow her to be able to keep track of it in the same software as everything else we're doing. So um no updates other than that, we're very, very excited to be able to update our our general ledger payroll purchasing software uh over the summer. Next thing, I am attending the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, which is called MASBO for short, the bi-monthly event on February eighth. Um the topic, so I wasn't sure if I was gonna go, because it's been pretty busy. But there's one on building relationships with PTAs and PTOs, conflict resolution, um school-related changes to Chapter Thirty B, which is one of the reasons why I really want to attend this. That has to do with procurement and the changes for schools. Um using your district's data to identify inequities and focus areas. Another one I'm looking forward to. And most importantly, records management, which will break down all of the records we have to keep and what timelines, like how long we have to keep all of the the personnel records and the everything else. We, we have a storage unit that is stocked right now, of boxes of stuff. And so our big goal is to be able to organize it and shred the things that we don't need anymore. So there's, I'm, I'm excited to attend this professional.
I wish they had that when Pam and I were cleaning out the old office, because I had a paper from the mass records and Pam and I were constantly flipping through it as we were looking through the files that went back to, I don't know when. So I wish they had done it a, two years ago, but I'm glad you're going to know that for us, Caitlin.
I hope so too, because it, it feels a little overwhelming knowing in what timeline and when you can get rid of some things. But um Jess, our payroll person, has been to the um the storage unit three times in the past week looking for a resume from the nineteen seventies. So it would be great to be able to say, we don't have that anymore, or we do have that and it's here. So organization and and kind of cleaning out would be, is gonna be a great step for us. Uh lastly, the Wellness Advisory Council met the second time last week. This council is composed of principals, PE teachers, nurses, psychologists, um food service directors, school committee members across all four schools. The meeting gave us a chance to assess our practices and policies regarding physical and health education, nutrition, social, emotional health and uh family involvement. So our next, now that we've done an intake and have identified some of our, our strengths and weaknesses when it comes to these areas, now we're going to start crafting goals and crafting some, you know, some areas we'd like to look at for, for how to um have better policies in place for, for school wellness. And we're using the whole school, whole community, whole framework, whole child frameworks by the CDC. Uh there's seventeen members across all four schools. And it's been, it's a pretty great opportunity to really address what our um our health and wellness needs of our students have been. Are there any questions about my report?
I just have one, I'm sorry, just a quick um not, I'm wondering. So I have a strong background in nutrition and health education. And this last year, I did a certification in social emotional learning facilitation uh for, and it was an education oriented program um specifically for schools. So I was wondering if it would be a conflict of interest if I were to pitch to Jackie maybe doing some social emotional learning workshops as professional development or with the students or both.
I'm not sure, but if you would like to join our committee, because we do have several school pu- um committee members, um one from Irving and one from Leverett. So if you're interested in joining the committee and having, you know, your voice in the conversation, that would be great.
I would love that, yeah. Fabulous. If you can send me some more information on that, Caitlin, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll send that on to you, thank you.
And Jen, I'd love to put you in touch with our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Um and perhaps you could do um some social emotional workshops, maybe for Schutzeberry, but maybe for all of Union Twenty Eight, not to put all that on you, but.
No, I would love it. Yeah.
Could I share your um contact information then with Lindsay?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Caitlin. Um Jackie sent us a principal's report. You mind just quickly go over that, Jennifer, just so Suzy knows all of the wonderful things going on in our school?
Yes, I can go over it. I don't have ears or a hat to wear tonight. And as you all know, I'm, I'm not Jackie's enthusiastic um presenter of the principal's report, but I will do my best. So um Schutzeberry ha- elementary has some school-wide rules and expectations. Choose safety, choose respect, choose responsibility and choose love. And choose love is the social emotional um learning program that we use. And we are famous because not only have we been in other publications, but we were most recently in Commissioner Riley's Commissioners Report. So shout out to SES for our wonderful work around um social emotional learning. So shout out to SES for our wonderful work around, um, social emotional learning. Um, Schutzbury is doing a full-school musical. How exciting. They're going to have a forty-minute musical called Pirates, and that will be this spring. Mr. Cortina, who is the music teacher at SES, is teaching the music and directing along with our principal, Principal Mandanza. This, most of the students are really excited. And all students pre-K to sixth will participate in some way. The date is still to be determined, but look for that information. The spaghetti dinner is back, but revised. Um, it's going to be one serving only. So please mark your calendars for May fifth. Bravo. Jackie said to our teachers and bus drivers for being flexible, but let me also toss out our principal, who takes my weather texts at all hours. So bravo to all the staff and our drivers for being flexible and positive with our crazy winter schedules. Um, Schutzbury is also doing amazing work in literacy and math. And, um, in February, teachers and administrators from all of the other Union Twenty-Eight schools are coming to observe the work that Schutzbury is doing in literacy with you, utilizing a different curriculum, how they use push-in and tiered models of intervention to support students, and how they're incorporating our new professional development, um, the science of reading strategies and research. So, yay again, Schutzbury. And we have also finally hired a new cafeteria assistant. So we'd like to welcome Melissa, Melinda Hazen to SES. And overall, SES is a happy, creative, and positive school community. The morale is generally very high, and you all know this, but I'll repeat it. It is a fun place to learn and to work.
Yeah, yes, he has.
Yeah, thank you very much, and, uh, appreciate all of that. It is wonderful to hear and see. Um, Steve is not here to report on the Amherst Town Representatives' Report. So we'll move on. Um, Union Twenty-Eight, I don't think we have anything to report until, okay? In Collaborative, we just had our meeting actually last night, um, just going over financials, um, reviewing some of the wonderful things that are happening. Um, as you know, the Collaborative is, uh, an organization that works throughout the state with incarcerated youth, uh, both Hampshire, uh, Hampton Franklin Counties, um, and beyond. So, uh, great organization. Um, as I always say, I, I love Schutzbury School. I love Union Twenty-Eight, and I love the Collaborative, so equal thirds.
We won't ask you to pick a favorite child.
I don't have favorites. Um, so the next, um, items on the agenda are going to be, uh, first readings on policies. Um, we generally take any edits with that, so, uh, I'm not sure, Trevor, if you really need to stay for the rest of the meeting. You can put in there that, uh, there were, uh, a review of policies for first readings. And if there are any edits, we usually do them ourselves anyhow, right?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a note.
Okay. I would say that's good for you. We'll, we'll do the first readings on these policies and move right along.
All right, thanks.
All right, good night, Trevor.
Have a good night.
All right. So, we've got first reading on DD Grants Proposals and Special Projects. If you have any edits, you can share them now, or you can send them to Jennifer or anyone on the Policy Subcommittee. Same with DBC, Budget Deadlines and Schedules. Anything there? Anything anyone wants to say? Okay. DBD, Budget Planning. Okay. Uh, DBG, Budget Adoption Procedures. Okay, and DBJ, Budget Transfer Authority.
I just want to thank the Policy Committee. We're, they're well-read when they come and super-efficient. I can't say I have a favorite Policy Committee in Union Twenty-Eight, but I do love working with the Schutzbury Policy Subcommittee. So thank you all for your work.
Great. And if you all go good with not just reading them out loud, I mean, I think we can all do that ourselves, and, okay. So just a real quick recap, we have a meeting with the Finance Committee on Tuesday, February seventh at six forty-five. A four-towns meeting, February eleventh at nine o'clock. The Our Town Newsletter is going to be going out, so if we have anyone who really is really excited about writing one, they can write that. Um, otherwise, I'll send you a version that you can edit. Is there anything else that anyone would like to say or share? Okay. That said, or nothing said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.